Oh, now it's being recorded. Okay, I do not see any hands raised, so I am going to assume that nobody's gonna record it or broadcast it. Thank you. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools District website under School Committee Agendas, SC Agenda 2020-21. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to assure accurate meeting minutes. And these ground rules, I have been lax on in the past, and I am going to start tightening up on things such as, I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Okay, so I will go through the list of members. People don't need to be raising their hands or jumping in. I will get to you, I promise. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, including colloquy with other members, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. So if something that one member is saying you would like to respond to, please wait until that member is done speaking, and then I will call on you to respond to what they have said. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. All right, now, we have a section for emergency business. Brian, do we have any emergency business?
We do.
Okay.
Are we doing, is that right now?
I'm not, well, yes, I mean, that's where it is in the agenda, I think.
Okay, that's fine. And I think you, so it's time sensitive, which is why I would say yes. So we have, we received a letter from the Mass School Building Authority as part of our enrollment in the MSBA process for the Green Meadow School. And really, it's just part of the process. They sent a letter indicating that we're proceeding with a K through, they don't look at pre-K, so don't take pre-K being left out of their letter as anything other than they focus and reimburse based on kindergarten through 12. In this case, it's kindergarten through grade three and an enrollment of 395 students. And so that's what the letter says. They, and that's in line with Nezdek projections. It's in line with all the data that we've sent them, and then they send it back to the school and the town and ask for endorsement from the school committee, the superintendent, and the board of selectmen. So this will be your opportunity to say, yes, we are in agreement with that. And then at some point in the very near future, Madam Chair, you'll come and sign. I'll sign, and the board of selectmen are taking it up at their meeting as well on Tuesday. I believe it's Tuesday.
And we're just voting on the fact that we want to proceed with this, not about the fact that we agree that we only have 395 students.
Right, we're agreeing that that information is accurate.
Okay, oh, that's it. Okay. Um, yes, Mary.
Brian, I thought, I guess I misread it, because I was under the impression that this meant that we did agree that 395 is the number.
Yeah, we do agree that that information's accurate, that 395 is the number.
So we are in fact agreeing that we're gonna produce a, whatever, Green Meadow with using that number.
Right, so for their feasibility study, that's the number that they'll use in their tabulations, if you will, when they look at how to build the school.
All right, I heard here first that there are so many births from this COVID generation that there's gonna be a spike in five years. Heard it here first. These numbers are not gonna work.
Oh, great.
Just saying.
Is there a percentage increase, or?
By my son's group of friends, every one of them is having a kid this year. Anyway.
Okay, um, so do we need to vote? Is this something that requires a vote, or just?
I thought you were gonna go around asking each member.
Yeah, I am. I'm asking Brian, though. I don't know if this is something that we need to vote on.
I would say you should vote.
Okay, all right, so, Jessica Clark, do you have any questions?
Yes, is that 395 number, will they take into account kids who unenrolled due to COVID, or are they gonna, have there been any changes in how they're gonna look at those numbers? Because it's not a typical year, or are they using numbers from last year?
They actually look significantly further back than that. They look, I believe, and Jennifer can correct me, but I think it's a 10-year period that they look at.
The historical.
The historical data.
Okay, Jennifer's nodding for the record. Okay, Beth Lynn, do you have any questions?
I guess it would be good to just say that if you could delineate just for a reminder, because I know some of this process from having, so that they pull that from, what are the sources that end up making us feel confident about that? I'd just love to hear the rationale for, like, you agree with that, but is dot, dot, dot.
So they look at longitudinal data, they look at Nezdek, they look at the, they look at our projections, so they go back from to 2011 and look at how many kids we've had every year, and it's, quite frankly, it's gone down a little bit every year. So they're just looking, they look at birth rates, and we may want to take it as amended and then add Mary's statement at the end, and who knows what happens in a few, we can get a few more seats out of this. So that's the kind of data. They look at the town, they look at the population, they look at birth rates, they look at the Department of Education, and then the town enrollment as well.
Okay, Natasha, do you have any?
Yes, so it says on here, students in K through three, so what about pre-K? And also, is that included in this number?
No, and they don't reimburse for pre-K.
But would we, would we need a building, I guess, to the capacity that supports that?
That's just not part of their process, because it's not mandated, so they don't include pre-K in that. They know we have it, but it's not something that they include in their numbers.
Jennifer.
I'm not finished, I'm sorry.
Yes, I thought she wanted to answer you.
Oh, I don't know, I didn't see, I was looking at the.
Holly, can you unmute Jennifer, please?
So where that would be addressed, Natasha, is in the feasibility study, we would say that we're building a school with a pre-K. It just wouldn't necessarily be reimbursable. This identifies the number of students so that we can figure out how many square feet with the percentage of reimbursement, so it wouldn't be removing the preschool from that design. It's just in a separate conversation.
So this is specific to reimbursement only? And not about, because I guess what I, maybe that didn't jump out at me a little bit, because it seemed to talk a lot more about like square footage and stuff that seemed to be space-wise, but if it's specific to reimbursement, is it, is it something that maybe we could delineate, like reimbursable versus not?
So pre-K is not reimbursable by MSBA? I don't think you have to delineate, that's just not part of what they do. They do K through 12.
Um, so I think this is something that, if you have further questions about, this is something that can be clarified outside of this meeting.
Well, we have to vote on it, right, tonight? We're being asked to vote on it?
We, we're just voting on the fact that 395 is what we have for K through third students. That's it. We're just affirming.
We're not voting on this letter.
We're voting that the letter is accurate, that we have 395 students from kindergarten through third grade.
My other question was about, is this, this is just current, this is not projected, I'm thinking about 129 Parker Street?
They've taken, oh, sorry.
Yes, go, Brian.
They've taken all of that into consideration, so part of what they did was when we met, they talked with Greg, and they got information from Greg Johnson, from Mike Guzzo, and that would include 129 Parker, and there were actually two or three other, I think, smaller developments, but they really take a very holistic view of the town. So sort of past, current, and future in terms of population.
So I think what's important is that they've, they've come to us with this number. Brian and Jen are telling us that this is what the number is, and we're just voting to confirm that everyone has their ducks in a row.
Yeah, if it's not about the wording of the letter, then I think I'd feel comfortable. If it's about voting on the letter itself, that's where my questions were different, but I, I'm a little confused on, on that, if we're voting just on the number.
Uh, Brian?
So we're not, so it's actually not our letter, it's the letter from the MSBA that just says, we're in agreement with their findings, and, and we are, as is the town. So we're not voting on the language of the letter. It's the number in the letter.
Mary, did you have something?
Well, if, Natasha, maybe if you look at the actual certification, that's what I think we're actually voting on, and it does it in a more concise manner. Talks about the.
The concertification letter?
Right, yeah, it's the certification that will actually be signed by, by Lydia and, and Brian.
That's what I was looking at. I think what, I guess when I got to the sentence, and again, it's totally fine, this is just questioning, it says, the town further acknowledge and agree that among other the, the design enrollment, square feet per student, space in total of the Green Meadow Elementary show will be subject to the approval of, and basically it talks about the square footage and everything relating to that 395. So that was my only hesitation. I understand that it's about reimbursement. This didn't talk about reimbursement specifically, it talked more about design and capacity, and that was what gave me pause, because we know pre-K is part of Green Meadow.
Correct, but what they're saying is, is according to this number, this is the number of square feet that will be part of the reimbursable program. It's not talking about anything beyond that, because we have to pay out of pocket for the preschool, any preschool square footage, so we could make that as big or as small as we want it to be. That's why they're not addressing it, because they don't have any control over it.
And that's if we keep the preschool with Green Meadow, correct?
Right.
There are options where you may not build a, right, so this is just exploring all options that we're signing up for, and sorry, I spoke out of, whoops.
That's okay. I know, it's, it's, it's gonna be hard for us to get used to, we'll get there, it's, you know, um, all right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, is it okay? Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the Massachusetts School Building Authority recommendation about the 395 student platform, and that we give Lydia and Brian the authority to sign the design enrollment certification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do, do we have a discussion? Is there any more discussion? No, okay, roll call vote, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Um, I will abstain.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay, now, on to policy, unless there's other urgent business, Brian, is there other urgent business?
No.
Excellent. Okay, so, first policy on the agenda is AC nondiscrimination, this is a second reading. We have been through this, it was sent back for further review by Jeff, and also because in number five, there was a sentence that said something about decisions might have on the human relations aspect of all segments of society, which was awkward and strange, so we just struck it. So now seriously, I mean, it doesn't really alter the content, it just carefully considering all the decisions made within the school district, the potential benefits or adverse consequences that those decisions might have on the school community. Bam, done, okay, that's the only change.
Sorry, Lydia, the copy that I have still has it in it.
Still has it in it?
Still has it in it, the one that you've, that is part of our policies tonight.
Well, then I uploaded the wrong one, did, oh, you know why? Because that's the shortcut, and I must have made the edits after I did the shortcut, sorry. I can go do that now. If you want, I can send that. Do, do. Are there any questions? Mary, nope, Jessica.
No.
Beth Lynn.
No.
Natasha.
No.
Okay.
Can you, I guess, can you, the one that you, the final one, were there other edits? You said that there were. It was just that one.
Correct.
Where was, where was that sentence at again?
In five.
Number five.
Number five, see where it says that those decisions might have on the human relations aspects of all segments of society. From human relations to the end of that sentence, we took that out, and we replaced it with those decisions might have on the school community.
So I have the right one.
Sorry.
I have the right one, too.
I do, too. Sorry, I was misreading it, sorry about that, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because at one point, we were talking about taking the entire sentence out, I guess.
Right, right.
We didn't, okay.
Okay, so the one we have then is, is, is the updated one, okay.
Correct, so I will entertain a motion.
All right.
Or not.
I can make, I can make a motion that we accept AC nondiscrimination policy.
Second.
I will.
Discussion? No discussion, okay, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay. Next one, IBG, sorry, IHBG is homeschooling, it replaces current Maynard Policy 661. And it went back for further review with Jeff to address sped, getting sped services in a homeschooling environment, so Jeff added under legal references, DESI's Administrative Advisory sped 2018-1, which clearly discusses and instructs that homeschool children can receive sped services from the district in which they're homeschooling. So are there any questions, Mary?
No.
Jessica?
No.
Beth Lynn?
No.
Natasha?
Nope.
And Lydia, nope, okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept IHBG homeschooling, replacing Maynard School Committee policy number 661.
Second.
I will second.
And discussion. All right. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yeah.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay. Next one, JH, student absences and excuses. It incorporates part of 520 and replaces 520. We added in, let's see, went to the fourth paragraph, which I think is highlighted in orange, is it still, yep.
It is.
Okay, so we, we added that. And there was a question about whether or not we should mention or or talk about the SRO in terms of Student Absence Notification Program. It was it was determined that because the SRO is, their role is already described and and agreed upon in the MOA with the Maynard Police Department, that there wasn't really a need to reference it here, and it also, because the MOA is redone every year, there could be changes that would have to be made, that would not be captured in this policy. So, um, questions, Jessica Clark?
No, I didn't have any questions on this one.
Beth Lynn?
No, no questions.
Natasha?
I did, I remember, this was the one where, I think it was also, the other part was about checking, I guess, for special education students, you know, checking with the team chair, or, you know, that, that piece about the absence. I know that was one of the variations, I don't know if Jeff had any feedback in relation to that.
Jeff was at the meeting with us, and he said that this is good to go.
Okay, and the reference to the MOA, did we want to put that in our citation? To cite if we're saying that that's, we're basically, this policy will be aligning with the MOA, SRO? That is part of our reference? Because that's what we would be following, using, if we're engaging?
Brian, do you have an opinion on that?
I think they're two separate policies. I don't think you need to reference the MOA with the, with the Maynard Police Department. I think it's a pretty specific MOA related to the SRO.
Does the.
The other point that Jeff made was that we might not always have an SRO. And so if we include that in the policy, then that that could also be problematic.
So does the MOA give any, I guess, outline any action about absence, how they would proceed with absences or engage students with absences or excuses?
Brian?
So that's more, so that whole topic of attendance is really more the school side of things? Not the school resource officer, per se?
Does the MOA, though, give reference to student absences and excuses, or engaging in behavior, or relating to anything about this, though?
I don't believe so, I don't have it actually in front of me, but it has more to do with so sort of legally, what they, when they can talk to kids, who has to be present, what they can search, what they can't search, how they support the schools, it's more focused on the legal aspects of being an SRO in terms of the police department, as opposed to, say, student absences and excuses.
Um, and Natasha, I think you're thinking of the, the case where an SRO went to someone's house because their son had a number of absences, and they were only sent because it had become a legal matter. It's not standard practice for the SRO to do that.
Well, I know that at the, that is one instance, but also it has been shared at school councils, I think at the high school, actually, where that is something that, when our attendance or whatever dropping, that that was a consideration being considered or explored about the principal engaging the SRO and outreach efforts in that capacity, so so it wasn't just that one, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know what's come of it, that's why I was curious about.
Brian?
I would say it is a collaborative process. For example, if we have students that aren't engaging right now, the principal, specifically at the high school, may go, has gone to specific students' homes to check, and will go with the SRO just as a team, to say, is everything okay? How can we support you? But that doesn't, I, I don't see that being needed to be spelled out in any detail in a student absence and excuse policy.
Okay.
Is there, is that a decision the, the principal makes on their own, or is that in conjunction with superintendent? Or do they, I'm wondering at what point they would engage on those kind of one-off basis to make a determination before engaging a police officer in a, in that, it doesn't sound like that's a, the court-driven decision, but.
Jennifer?
No, go ahead, Brian.
So I was gonna say, so they meet, they have a team, so they meet as a team, and she's part of the team, so it's not at all court-involved, it's nothing related to that, it's a school issue, and she's part of the school team. I say she, the SRO is part of that school team, and they decide, which students do we need to check in with, which students are we not seeing attending? You know, in this case, it may be remote classes or hybrid classes, so it's, it's much more to school level, and the SRO, we're fortunate, is part of the school team.
Okay.
I just have hesitation in general about, like, not codifying that in a way that when we engage, so like, it's just what you're talking about, if it's like with a team decision, or but it just seems like a lot for, you know, the principal, it doesn't sound like it's necessarily legally driven that they need to do it, but that they would make the decision to have a, a police officer come along for an absence-related matter, potentially.
Brian?
So, and I think the difference is we're fortunate that we have an SRO as part of our team. If we didn't, certainly this is not a situation that we're talking about, in which the principal would call the Maynard Police Department and say, we need a police escort to go to a home. That's not what we're talking about. We're fortunate that we have an SRO as part of our team at any level, so it's much more as a team mental health approach to say, can we help you? How can we support you? We care about you, we want you at school. And I think, and from what I understand, that's how the SRO is viewed.
And so they're there in, in a capacity of, of helping support the principal from a safety perspective? And engaging the student and the family, or I guess, when I see, like, if I'm, you know, if I open my door, whatever, I see a police officer and the principal, I just want to understand the resource that they provide to the family, that they're offering, the principal with that, in that effort.
Brian?
So, just to be clear, they're not there to protect the principal. They're there as part of that team to see if there are resources that may be, that the family may need that may be outside the school's purview, that the SRO may be aware of, to help the family in terms of wraparound services, if that's what needed. And it's just another face that's part of the overarching system, whether it's the school and the police department working in concert to say, we care about you, and we want you at school, how can we help you?
Okay, I'm gonna end discussion there. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept JH student absences and excuses, replacing Maynard School Committee policy number 520.
Second, okay, discussion? Any discussion? Nope. Okay, roll call vote, Beth Lynn Houlihan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
No.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have IJND. These are first readings, and the three of them, basically, they, they replace 603, current policy is 603, which is long but also outdated, and these three spec, specifically address certain areas of 603, and they do it in a more concise way, and it's much more current. So the first one is INJD, access to digital resources. Are there any comments or suggestions or questions?
Can you clarify a little bit about what, well, I'm sorry, I'll wait till you call on everybody.
Um, Mary Branley?
No, no questions.
All right, Natasha?
The replaces policies 603, I just want to, like, understand a little bit more the. The replaces policies six oh three, I just want to like understand a little bit more of the discussion that brought us to this meeting and also like with this recommendation of, is it just that we're trying to be more robust in our social media in general? It's kind of like along that same idea in the policy that we just approved and we're just kind of continuing on with that.
We're not going backwards. So IJND is actually the overarching. IJNDD is a subcategory of IJND.
Is that, is that an approved, approved, I guess? If you could explain a little bit more that, how that, why that was a preferred, I guess, way to go about it?
Why it was preferred was because we started the social media policy over a year ago and it, um, ended up progressing and morphing and we ended up, I think, with like three different iterations and eventually just realized that IJNDD was adequate and, and covered what we needed it to cover, especially in addition to, um, all the other IJND policies. And so because that was already in the shoot, now we can still have IJNDD and not have IJND. But we, um, we would then need to go and update six oh three.
Are there parts of six oh three that were of most concern that we would not want to? Reasons why we would not want to or be better to adopt this one?
Well, first of all, it hadn't been looked at since twenty fourteen. Um, and so it was quite outdated and a lot, some of it was not necessarily relevant and some of it wasn't even necessary. And just like all of the other policies that we've replaced with mask policies, it's because, they need to be updated and mask has done a good job. So there's really no reason to reinvent the wheel. Brian?
And, and just for reference, our IT director, Adam Steiner thoroughly reviewed all these policies, making some minor changes. I don't know if it was in these, but in one of the policies, um, and is in support of these policies in particular.
Yeah.
I, the, I'm sorry.
Okay, Jessica Clark?
Clarification, just thinking this through. And also when we use mask policies, it must take away a little bit of liability as well, should any issues arise because they're provided by mask and a little vetted to a higher level than if we were to write them ourselves, correct?
Well, I mean, we'd still, if we wrote them ourselves, we'd still vet them through legal, but I mean, they definitely have more resources than we do.
To do backing and potential other.
Yeah.
Or type, not procuring clause. I can't think of the right term, but you get where I'm going with it.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, Bethland?
Uh, I guess my only comment in looking at this, I, I tried to look through the whole package, since we're all replacing one policy and thinking through instances where we want to make sure that we're addressing things. And I see here in the, so I know we're talking about the first one. I can't wait to mention this, but I just see that as we're moving forward with these, that things are addressed and organized a little differently, but I, I think I, I appreciate the way that they've done this and it seems to cover what we have been trying to make sure gets covered in relation to things we've been hearing from the community over the last few years about protecting students and, and what they're doing and, and conduct online and stuff like that. So I just want to say that that's the lens through which I'm looking at the three.
Okay. Um, I will accept a motion, entertain a motion. Oh, no, sorry, we're not voting on this tonight. I just need, um, any feedback or changes that.
Lydia, did the cross-reference at the bottom, do we want to include the one that we already approved? Or is that not?
You don't need, because it's a sub, it's a subcategory of it.
Okay, so I didn't know if it would be helpful to include that or not, that social media.
It's, uh, it's not necessary because it doesn't clarify anything. The INJDD doesn't clarify anything in INJD.
Lee, is there, was there another policy you talked about? I thought we did the social media one, another, like maybe another about websites or things, being discussed?
Internet publication is IN, IJNDC and that.
Okay, that's, that's the, okay, so that's, okay.
Bethland?
You just mentioned INJDD. Am I missing one?
No, we already approved it. That was the social media policy.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something that was supposed to be here.
INJD and then there's INJDB, INJDC, INJDD.
Got it. Thank you. Yes, and I remember the social media, but I wasn't making that connection. So thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, there's nothing else on this one. We can move on to INJDB. I started IJNDB. Jessica, anything on?
I was getting confused. Okay. No, I don't know. I, I don't, just to comment, I don't know if it's a new ad or not, but I really like how it acknowledges that whether you're on a school-owned or personal device, you still need to respect the district network and that it's a privilege. So I think that was a good ad.
Yeah, that was part of policy. We didn't write that in. That was already there.
Yeah.
Bethland?
Uh, yeah, I don't think I have any other comments on it. I've said already.
Okay, Natasha?
About INJDB we're talking about, right?
IJNDB, yep.
Yeah, no.
Okay, Mary?
No.
Alrighty. Do we want to vote on it or do we want to wait and review this? Let's wait and review the third one. Okay, IJNDC, internet publication. Start with Bethland.
Um, yeah, again, I don't feel like I have anything more to say about it. I think it's fairly comprehensive and I do like how it talks about student photographs, student, student work and staff as well, photographs, identifying information from work. I think that's, I like that that's included here and spelled out.
Okay, um, Natasha?
Um, so yeah, this was the one I was thinking about. Um, so the, the content about, or guess, about written consent. I know there have been times where we, we do post like the, but of the parent for the students' student work in like musical pieces. I'm just thinking of all the different shows that we, we have and where we, you know, we share that. Is that something that is like behind the scenes happening? I'm just thinking, you know, like if they're like music concerts that if we're televising, you know, anything or whatever it is that the concerts, that the written consent for like to, to use their voice likeness, all of that. Is that already in place? Or is that, would that be a new ad?
Brian?
I need a little more information. I'm not trying to understand the question.
So under safety precautions, student work, C, reference to student work, voices, likeness, quotes, written materials, musical pieces, graphic artwork, published stuff, um, without written consent of the student or parent, student's parent or guardian. I'm just understanding, is that something that we already do or that be? I'm just thinking of like the musical events that we do, do all those parents, the kids who perform, if they're like televised or pictures or whatnot, those are all permissions already obtained for those.
Televised by us or by WAVM?
In any capacity. It would be, Maynard Public Schools in some capacity. So, so like a, you know, principal takes a photo and like, hey, look, we had this spelling bee or, you know, and just the, things like that. I'm just thinking about things that we've done to, to share. I want to make sure that it that, it seems like, I don't know if that's a new ad that we'd have to do.
Start with Jen and then I'll go to Mary and then Jessica.
Jen is muted.
Muted.
Censored.
My husband was yelling, so I muted myself. Um, so we do have a, um, form that parents fill out. Um, I think what we would need currently that allows for authorization of images to be posted in a variety of places and or not. Um, and I was trying to find it online to see if it was there to find the language. I think probably what we would do is need to cross-reference that with the specific specificity of what is called out here to make sure that, you know, audio recordings and things of that, which may not be included within that form. So, but I think it would be a simple adjustment to language of a process that we already have in place. Anyone who is posting information, um, or videos or pictures, um, should be cross-referencing with those lists that are kept in the, um, the offices of each school. Um, and that was a reminder that we did send out last year after we had, you know, some concerns, um, to make sure that anything that's posted, you know, it's not just done immediately, but we're cross-referencing with who those students are, whose, whose families have asked that they not be, um, their, their images not be shared.
Also Natasha, before I call on Mary, um, that is addressed in IJNDD about social media and publishing students', um, images or videos or whatnot. So I will add the cross-reference of IJNDD to the bottom of this policy.
Okay. All right. And my other question was about, um, in the supervision, oh wait, yeah, number two, the section two, about the district's pages and how, I know this is, there are some pages that are not reflective of Maynard Public Schools. Once this is implemented, is that something that will be updated where it's, it's hard to differentiate personal versus, um, district-wide? So this would support that kind of effort?
This and IJNDD both do. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah, I had raised my hand to make the same comment that Jen did about the, um, about the form that gets signed, but it's good to, to have that extra piece in there. The only, um, my only small little comment was under number four, safety precautions at the top. It talks about first and last names, personal phone numbers or home addresses will not be published. I was just gonna ask if we could just add email addresses also. Just as more clarification. That was the only change.
And Jessica?
I was just going to reference the same, that there is a form that is filled out and signed and, um, I was also going to reference. It was, for one of my own children was personally, not personally used, but, um, used as a reason why something couldn't be shared. So I know they are tracking and keeping a, a list of children's families who are not comfortable with that and haven't, um, signed consent, so.
I was familiar with the form. I just wasn't sure the musical pieces, like that part kind of stuck out to me this, at this, and I didn't, hadn't recalled that being, like, it seemed like like to Jennifer, it seemed like it expanded a little bit more than what we normally give consent for. So that's where I was like, it seems like some of it's an ad new. Not that, not saying that the consent wasn't happening at all, but just that some of the other considerations might be newer.
Well, I know that's what was referenced for my child, was that a music class video could not be shared because a child in the class had not agreed to the, cannot consented. So it was, um, so I think it does carry over to that, but it's great to double check.
Okay, um, I think I've called on everyone for comments. I've taken notes. We are now done with policy and we are going to be moving in to executive session for the purpose of, I'm just gonna read my little thinger. Uh, we're gonna enter into executive session under MGL, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three B. Reason number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Maynard Education Association and the Maynard Custodial Union. Because the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. Uh, the committee will not return to open session. So thank you for being with us tonight.
We need to enter by roll call.
And yes, and we need to, um, enter executive session by roll call. So Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Bethland Houlihan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy? Yes, we have now closed the public portion of our meeting and are entering into executive session.
Hi, everybody. Thank you.
All right, just give me a second here.
Yep.
Everybody know who O one eight eight one is? One of our meetings. I don't know who they are, but I wrote it down.
They're a secret agent.
They're at our budget meetings too.
Little seven.
Like, is it a zip code? Is it a birthday?
Hey, somebody's gotta know who they are.
It's probably Ken. I think it's Ken. I'm gonna say it's Ken Estabrook.
Name up there. Oh, that's too funny.
All right, um, do I need to do a roll call to open?